We will call the regular meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to be ordered at 7:04 on Thursday, October.
It's over there.
I didn't, I didn't do that.
Oh, we moved the flag. Okay, we moved the flag.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Would you like to stand now that we have located the flag and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, brother God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ashley's got the fast version.
She's got the fast version of everything.
I have pledged and I have star-spangled bannered today and I have, I'm coming. Roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross is absent. Ms. Hamel.
Present.
Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race is absent and Mayor Conley is here. This time I would like to entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Race and Mr. Gross.
I'll make that, go ahead.
I would make that motion.
Support. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? And they are excused. I believe that Ms. Race is going to join us um via Zoom and at the discretion of the chair, I'm Ms. Race is not allowed, if you're not in physical attendance, you are not allowed to vote. But the chair has the discretion to allow anyone to ask a question or to comment during a, and I just feel that the legislature overreached on that particular piece and as the chair, Renee, if you at any point have a question, please feel free to ask. At this time, we will move along to public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that the citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a direct response. Any public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kami. I am here on behalf of the Cedar Springs Public Library, which is your library. So I would like to tell you about what happened in September at your library. We started fall reading bingo. We had sixteen children up to five years old. Sign up twenty elementary students, five teens and tweens and sixteen adults. We had a total of ninety-one children and seventy-five adults come to storytime. We had a tie-dye event for elementary age school children, which eighteen attended with seven adults. We have an eye spy that's going on inside the library and a hundred and seventeen have participated in that. We also have a scavenger hunt. Fifty-nine have participated in that. We had visits from CTA students this past month and a hundred and twenty-seven children and eleven adults. We had a Friends of the Library book sale during Red Flannel. That grossed over a thousand dollars. We had twenty finishers who earned a free ride during Danish Festival. For our families, we had a Hocus Pocus party with twenty-four individuals participating. And some came very much in character, which was appreciated. We do. If you would like to visit the library's Facebook page, you may or may not recognize someone in the room. So for our adults, we had one person come and get some technology tutoring. We had seven at book club, nine at writer's group, twenty-one blood donors and thirty-five attend the sewing on Wednesday. We just recently started, recently meaning October third, a enhanced fitness or specifically designed for older adults. It has been very successful. Today, we had twenty-one attenders. And we've had no less than sixteen and it's twice a week. That is what happened and is what is happening. Thanks, everybody.
Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Christopher Conflitty and I have property at sixty-seven East Beach. And I wanted to thank the council for continuing to work on this and, and, and the city manager are not, earn multifamily homes. So I see that's on the agenda. I'm thankful that we did get to meet. Um, I appreciate the old school kind of face-to-face hashing things out. I think that is, is, was definitely needed. So the, do you guys have a copy of the affidavit? Um, so the affidavit is very, it's much better. Um, we're, we're real close to agreeing on that. Number six on the affidavit, though, I would like to ask the council just for your explanation of what number six means to you guys. You know, when, when you, when you can, I would appreciate that explanation. So then hopefully we can move forward and put this, put this thing to bed. Would you guys?
I'm not gonna do that now.
Not right now? Okay.
Okay, let, let me do this for you one more time. Instead of here, during public comment, we don't answer questions. When it's on the agenda, we have a conversation.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one more thing. I represent the city council and I'm in my office forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. Um, I sent this affidavit to the landlords seven, eight days ago. I've not heard anything back from them. If there's an issue with number six, I could have addressed it long before this meeting.
Any other public comment?
Sign your crank right, eight zero seven zero seventeen mile road. I would just like to thank all of you for the effort to, that you have put forth in really thinking this through and hashing it out with Mike. It's been a long journey. It's been a long ten months and I'm just excited to see that when parties are willing, we can all work together and come to a great conclusion that works for everybody. So thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Take your time. Take your time. You're fine. I don't start the timer till you start to talk.
Mark Claus, fifty-four South First. Thank you for a wonderful Red Flannel Day. That's always a lot of fun. Just wanted to thank you guys. I know there's a lot of work on your side and also on DPS and the sheriff guys. So appreciate all they do to make it fun and wonderful time. And this, in my last little time, I've been involved quite a bit with the county politics and uh, last three or four months, a lot with the libraries, the KDL system. And I'm so glad that we're independent. I'm so glad that we get to make our own decisions. Cause some of the decisions that are made fit a portion of the county, but not the whole county. And they have to kind of follow along with it, even if it doesn't necessarily fit their community. So I'm glad we get to make our own decisions and we have great librarians that, you know, take care of the kids and do all that stuff. So anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We have no public hearings this evening, correct?
Correct. Ms. Conley, there are some members of the public online.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Absolutely.
If there are any members of the public online that would like to make a public comment, please do so. Hearing none?
Adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Before we do that, I'd like to add a few things.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to add six D, which would be identical to six E except for the fifth street sidewalk project instead of second street.
This is the, that we just missed the.
Correct. And you guys have a hard copy in front of you. So the approval of the spooktacular event is in your agenda, but did not have actually, I think, packets, I think, at the time. I've likewise provided you with a hard copy of that, a cost estimate from the sheriff's department. And then I believe, Ms. Powell, you wanted to add a discussion item regarding the newspaper and public notices. Is that correct?
Yes, apparently we have to post our legal notices somewhere and I guess if we can post them in the Rockford Squire, that would be the most cost-effective and available newspaper for us all. Yes.
So a discussion item, D, D, discussion regarding newspaper and public notice. And I believe that's all I have.
Mr. Wilmot, could you clarify for me? The, you have six D exactly as stated in six C?
Oh, that's the, so six D in the consent agenda? As the engineering sidewalk, because we passed all the other pieces of it, but not that?
Yeah, so the city council passed everything, you know, to apply for the grants and all these things, but the engineering costs are separate. Um, so we've been operating under the assumption, finance director and I, that we'd already approved this portion of it. It's a necessary portion. No-brainer, but we have not done that. So to clarify for the clerk, the motion is, it's written six C is fine. And then I'd like to add in item six D, which is identical, except for you changed second street to this street.
And the amount is also the same? That was my concern.
I, I apologize. The amount is different. It's eighteen thousand something. But somebody who has a hard copy.
You want me to say in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand?
So there, there is a number on the hard copy. I just don't have it in front of me.
Twenty thousand, six hundred.
No, it's the other.
No, that was second street.
That's the first one. It's, I don't know.
Eighteen eight hundred.
Okay. I have that motion.
And then the D is in discussion items on the newspaper publication for public notice of meetings. You got that? Okay. So a motion to accept, to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
You have something?
The additions.
Okay. You looked like you were trying.
I was gonna say support.
Ms. Powell, that's as amended?
As amended.
Second. Uh, any, any discussion? And I guess we'll do a roll call. And with that, hold on. Uh, Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of other council members. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have just one thing to say about these sidewalks. I think that's a great asset to our community.
Oh, yeah.
Got some wonderful grants on that. And I know as a kid in Sand Lake, sidewalks were where we had a lot of fun. Met with people and had a good time. So I'm, I'm very happy to see
sidewalks are.
sidewalks in Cedar Springs.
Sidewalks are what make communities walkable. They're what make things accessible for people with disabilities, for people who are elderly that connect people to parts of communities and to each other. Sidewalks are absolutely critical. Okay, any other comments? I'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to action items. Motion to accept the interpretation and recommendation of the planning commission regarding replacement of section forty dash one three three by ordinance two sixteen. Mr. Wilmot?
So forty dash one three three is the former table of uses ordinance. Back when we had Mr. Tim Johnson as our planner, uh, the planning commission spent eight, nine months working on this issue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the entire time, the intention, uh, as I understood it, from the planning commission was to replace the whole forty one three three section with ordinance two sixteen, which is now uh, multiple different sections. Um, it was done in order to make forty one three three easier to understand and at the same time, we kind of updated. Um, however, I didn't actually write that ordinance. That was written by Tim Johnson. Um, and we failed to say the intention is to replace forty one three three.
Not just add it.
Yeah, so normally what you would do is you'd say, you know, here's the new forty one three three, but we change all the section numbers. So um, when municode recodified recently, they kept both sections.
Mm-hmm.
Well, both sections are not the same.
They don't play well together.
Yeah.
Not play well together. So, um, the planning commission thankfully remembered this and they've made the recommendation that the council adopt the recommendation. Uh, that that was their intention. And our hope is that municode will accept this and do what we intended originally. If not, then we'll bring back an ordinance or attach this with another ordinance at some point soon to do this.
And it's, and it's literally on a table.
Yes.
So I mean, it's not even like an actual like ordinance, ordinance chain. So, do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to accept the interpretation and recommendation of planning commission regarding the replacement of section forty dash one three three by ordinance two one six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was going through the table of uses the other day and we still had the B one in our table of uses.
This is the forty dash one three three table of uses?
Uh, I think so.
And that's the one that we're getting rid of.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That was the problem.
Yeah, it was a problem.
Part of the problem.
They, yes, but they actually like redid the whole table and then somehow just added it instead of replacing it with the older one. So now we have two.
Mm-hmm.
Which is not what planning commission intended. And who are we recommending that this goes to that is gonna change it? Municode.
So.
Where are you?
Yeah, I mean technically you guys aren't recommending anything. The planning commission recommended to you.
Right.
Um, and then you're going to accept that.
Okay.
Um, and then myself and the clerk as your representatives will contact municode, who keeps our ordinances for us.
Municipal, municipal core code authorization, something.
It's the, it's the company we pay to me.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought. But we think that they won't do it as recommended or what?
Also.
They published it.
This is a potentially complex legal situation. I think it's as easy as saying, hey, the council agrees with me that this is what we intended to do.
Oops.
If not, because it could be a scribbler's error, if not, then we'll just attach this to some other ordinance which is coming and we'll just do it next month.
Cause you have to pay every time you change an ordinance. Right, that makes, okay, that's, okay. Does that make sense? Yeah. All right, um, let's do a roll call. Why not? Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Uh, any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. Moving on to the next, um, action item, be a move to approve the downtown Halloween spooktacular event for October thirty first and have the KCSD deputies on Main Street to assist with traffic crossing from five to seven PM at an estimated cost of four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to be here to hand out candy on that particular time. And I would love to have the bathrooms open if we could, like we did for Red Flannel.
Just can you bring that up? Um, so currently, well, I shouldn't say that. In the past, the former mayor was able to, um, get some candy for city hall and that's what we handed out. I don't know if you guys have seen the price of candy recently. It's expensive. Now, I was able to identify about two hundred dollars in the budget that we could use to purchase some candy to hand out at city hall. Uh, but we would accept donations for anybody who wants to donate. I don't know if that's going to be enough candy. Um, if not, what I intended to do was take our two hundred dollars and donate that either to the fire station or the library. We both hand out candy. So any way you want to do it is fine by me. But, you know, for the purposes of this, we're just talking about making sure that the deputies keep traffic.
Right.
But yeah, I have no objection to doing that. Um, it, it does start at five PM. So anybody, I guess, who wants to join.
I, I can be here for that whole time. And I will like bring a table and set it up and I will be in costume and I will. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm like.
She's there for it.
I am all in for this. Okay, any, any questions, comments? You often have some concerns about the safety crossing.
I think they've done a great job the last few years. I couldn't be happier.
I've, I've been thrilled with how much it has just taken off and how the businesses have, it's really become like an event. And I really appreciate that.
I can't help this year. I have a commitment.
Yeah, I have littles, but I will donate candy. You can come by and we will give you candy.
For sure, but I want to like actually give you guys.
My, my fifteen-year-old is very excited about the idea of dressing up and helping pass out candy.
Oh, that's awesome.
Nice.
Very good. I think there will be a giant map of some capacity.
Gosh, that's hilarious.
I'm not sure what exactly, but. Okay, any other? We're good? I've been very excited. It's sort of grown each year. Is that enough policing?
Uh, it's been successful in years past.
Okay. Cause it is like a throng of people and. Y'all have. You've done an ama, you, the Kent County sheriffs have done an amazing job of keeping people safe. And because it is, I mean, it's like, I guess, well, our, our street should be open. Cause I was gonna say, it's a pretty busy street to have like several thousand people in costumes. So, but you've, I've never heard of there being a problem, which is pretty phenomenal.
Also, the library's handing out, um, visibility belts that are reflective and bright yellow high vis.
Go there first.
Go there, go there first, yeah.
First step.
Okay. I will do, since it involves money, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Conley vote, uh, yeah, Mayor Conley votes yes. I didn't skip, yeah, Renee, I'm trying to like not skip Renee. Um, Mayor Conley votes yes and we have a spooktacular. Uh, moving on to we didn't add a, an action item, so discussion items. Update a multifamily non-conforming properties. Sister manager.
So obviously this has been an ongoing issue and it's nebulous, you know, I'm kind of stuck in the middle trying to get what the landlords want, what the city wants.
I appreciated your marked up copy of the, um, that out to with the, some changes that you.
Sure. And of course, I, I didn't have the original from the landlords. That was never provided to me electronically. So you just got a copy of the paper copy that I had. Um, but, you know, the landlords and I sat down here about a week and a half ago. Um, tried to hammer out some of the details uh, of this affidavit. Essentially what's happening is we've got these properties that we have no evidence to show that they were ever in lawful use. To be considered a lawful non-conforming use, you must have had a lawful use at some point. Uh, for properties that don't have any evidence, this affidavit is going to create evidence. Uh, which would then give me the ability on behalf of the city to accept them as lawful non-conforming.
Right.
Um, so I don't know what the issue is with number six on the proposed affidavit. I read it. It looks fine to me. Uh, you know, again, this is a complex situation. I understand that not everybody has the same kind of legal understandings that I have. Uh, but it's essentially the landlords are going to make a statement that they believe their properties are lawful. Now they're gonna sign at the bottom. The city's going to then accept that and say, well, we don't have any other evidence.
We accept this as your.
Lawful.
Binding argument.
Now it's lawful non-conform. Beyond that, I don't think it needs to be any more complex. But I don't know. Maybe there's something else I don't know. If the landlords want, contact me and talk to me about number six and, you know, we know where I work.
Are you, are you in a place where, I, I was not at this meeting. So is there another meeting scheduled? Are we?
No, um, so we sat down, we talked about it. Again, there were two different versions. We tried to meld them together. There are certain things that at the meeting I thought, well, you know, we need to reword it in a different way. I'll work on it. I sent the updated draft, the D or two after that meeting, uh, back to the landlords. I heard nothing from them after that.
So we're basically waiting to hear back from them of if the updates based upon your conversation with them are acceptable or if there's more changes that.
Um, I, I did speak with one of the landlords.
Yeah, that's the other difficulty is we have.
There's multiple people. I don't know what every one of them thinks. Um, I did speak with one of them who at least indicated that they thought it was okay.
Okay. And to be clear also, each individual landlord can sign at whatever point that they feel like they have this, like it's not a collective of, I'm fine, but you're not, so I can't move forward.
Well, I mean, part of what we're trying to do is get everybody on the same page.
Right, but if somebody says, this is good to me, I'm good to go.
I also don't want to create seven versions. I don't want to have somebody say, well, I object because I don't like the period in that location.
But we have a couple of different things also, right? I mean, we have the legal non-conforming, but then we also have, um, variances. Isn't that a different, isn't there like a?
Sure. And so I'm, I'm trying to guide individual property owner based on, you know, what their property might need. And, you know, to the ability that I can give them their choice and options, that's up to them.
Right.
You know, I'm not malevolent in any way. I'm.
Right, but I'm just saying, then that's an individual, like it gets solved.
Um, yeah, I'm doing the best I can to resolve the issue.
Not suggesting you're not. I'm just saying like one could be resolved and another could still be outstanding.
Yes, but for the purposes of what we're trying to accomplish here.
The affidavit.
Yeah, I would like to have, you know, at least a collective yes from them saying, well, we agree that this is going be something we're willing to sign to solve this immediate problem.
Okay, so the current situation is you're waiting to hear back.
Yeah, I think, uh, hearing from the landlords, if they accept the version or if they have any minor changes, you'd like to see change or go into, engage with them and discuss on that issue. But what I sent out, I think is fair. I think it meets both of our objectives. And I, I just, I don't know what issues they might have.
Okay. Anyone else? Got anything?
Yeah. So I'm a little frustrated because I was at the meeting and literally every single point was agreed upon. And number six, I, I got an email. I thought maybe you'd been looped in, Mike, but, um, I responded. It was basically the same thing as that the number six didn't make any sense, which personally is the whole point of the affidavit. If you take out number six, there's no point. So I'm a little bit frustrated that we sat down, everybody went over it piece by piece. I read your version and it's literally the exact same thing that we all agreed on.
I'm also a little surprised to hear that you heard from a landlord, but I didn't.
I got, I didn't know I can forward you the, the stuff. That's fine, but it's literally just that.
At some point, it would be nice if the landlords could figure out, I'm the person trying to resolve the issue. And that by contacting you guys, it's. At some point, it would be nice if the landlords could figure out, I'm the person trying to resolve the issue, and that by contacting you guys, it's.
I haven't been contacted. No, and I said, like I said, I said it was, I read it, and it was totally, this is what we agreed on, so. I don't know, I'm just a little bit frustrated because we all worked really hard to get it together. And I just, I just don't understand what the whole, I don't under- I just don't, I don't understand literally what we said. On both sides.
Okay.
It's exactly what we agreed on at the meeting.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't, I know that's like kind of useless, but I'm just, I'm like at a loss. It's like word for word.
So at least you understand the complexities.
Absolutely, yes, and I have, yes.
Yep, Ms. Dixon.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that, I, I feel like at least we're leaps and bounds closer than we were. Um, if there's one point that feels ambiguous, I'm, I'm certain the city manager is willing to clarify and wordsmith in a way that is less ambiguous.
Yes, Ms. Ashton.
Um. I can see in um another part of the written document, that, another copy, um, where there's a little difference. That, in that document, it says at the time of the purchase of each property listed above. That's different than what number six is saying. Um, continually been used for. Does that mean since they've had it, since before they've had it? Before and after they've had it? Um. I can see where they, there might be a little bit of question to that, that's. That's all I can see, because perf- is currently performing as legal non-conformity property, um, is about the same thing. I don't know that you'd want that in there. But um that's the only difference I see.
What did you have to say about that? Can I ask Mr. Conflity?
Yes. Yes.
That's exactly what we're saying.
Oh, go to the microphone if you could please.
Yes.
We're, we're very close, I, I appreciate. Chris, Chris Conflity.
Alright, so what is your issue with number six?
Number six is just asking us to, to swear that it was done way back when we, we have no knowledge of, that's the whole point.
Knowledge. To the best of your understanding.
Right, but what, but you're asking us to swear by it, but what we can say is from the day that we purchased it, and, and, and before that, it was definitely used as multifamily, and it's been used as multifamily the entire time.
Which is what we're asking you to say.
Okay, yeah, that's, and that's great.
Like, we talked about to the best of my knowledge, we talked about that.
That's, I mean, we're fine with the best of my knowledge part.
I'd like to be saying to the best of my knowledge, we've always had city council meetings here. I don't know if we have, but as far as I know, we have.
To the best of my knowledge part, that's fine, there's no problem with that. The after air says multifamily dwelling, and then this is the part that's, that's questionable if we're, if we're swearing to this part. It's, it's used since the time when that use was lawful. Nobody knows that exact time.
Think that it was?
Yes.
Okay, and that's all that you had, that's what it's saying, to the best of your knowledge. The best of your knowledge is a blanket statement for that entire piece of it.
Okay.
On top of the fact that number eight says, like, it's literally double saying it. It's saying it twice. Number eight is saying, I, I'm pretty sure this is true with everything that I know, that's true.
Okay.
And then we put that in a number six to double make sure that you guys were clear on that.
Thank you for letting me clarify, I, I appreciate it, I understand better, thank you.
Yeah, we're just, I'm sorry, it's like, I'm sorry. I, I understand, I understand.
Hey. Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Powell.
I'd like to address the attachments that are supposed to go with this and make sure that everybody's on the same page as that. We discussed having uh on, for the record, a picture of each four corners of each home, the uh, street address, and the legal description to put on file with this affidavit.
Yeah.
And then this will attach to the deed or to the registration title, or so that when someone purchases it going forward?
So, yeah, this is all complex stuff, but basically what's gonna happen is this, is once these landlords and property owners submit this affidavit and the attachments, um, the zoning administrator will review to make sure that it's complete. Um, the zoning minister will then issue a letter of acceptance, uh, which will be forwarded back to the property owner, um, and will help create a record that will go with the zoning administrator's office.
It's how we make a paper trail.
Make a paper trail. It will at some point be on either the council or planning commission's agenda, so that it's, you know, impotability there. And then a year from now, when we're working on the master plan, we'll probably create a section of known legal non-conforming properties, so that it's in the master plan forever.
How it like pops up.
Yeah, so the question of whether it's going to be put into their chain of title, um, it could be. You know, the city is not going to pay to do that. Um, it would be to the landlord's benefit probably to do that, um, because now you're adding yet another, you know, piece of the, the paper trail. Um, plus, you're, you're being able to say to the person who might purchase the house from you, hey, I did the work and I got this notified as legal non-conforming, so you won't have a problem. Which has gotten us kind of what we're trying to do, we're trying to avoid problems.
That's my concern with like the couple that bought the property and then, but it's listed as a, as a single family residential.
Yes.
On the, on the title, like, it doesn't say that it's multifamily. So now, so now there will be proof.
Yes.
You know, there'll be documentation proof, everything will be taken care of. Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Uh, well, I was very happy and thank you absolutely for you.
Thank you.
Help on that. Thanks, ladies.
Yes. Anybody else got anything on that? This is a discussion item, so we're not voting on anything. But I want to make sure. Ms. Race, do you have any questions on this? She does not.
I do not.
Ms. Race, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. It's not.
One thing I'd like to say is I hope this brings attention to the homes that are in the R one, say our new developments, Prairie Run, so on so forth. That your neighbor in your R one neighborhood is not going to split that down into apartments.
Mm-hmm.
That's one thing that we need to be aware of for the future.
Well. I hate to say it, but I've been here for six years, I've resolved dozens and dozens and dozens of issues that have propped up over the years of poor planning and zoning. And property owners just doing whatever they want.
Right.
And not being caught. There are still issues, including in the newest neighborhoods in this community, that have to be resolved, prevent that type of thing from happening. Just saying that, you know, this isn't a, a one and done, we're not completing it.
But it's been brought out more to the public, I think, with this new dilemma that we solved.
At some point, myself and the planning commission will reach that utopia, but that is not.
It's never going to be perfect, Mike, ever.
He's just celebrating right now.
Yeah, let her have her little celebrate.
Have her moment.
Little win.
Alright, any other discussion? Moving on to item B, update on nineteen ninety-three international uh Ford forty-nine hundred ambulance, the new ambulance.
Take a short recess.
Sure. Um, we are going to recess for ten minutes, is that sufficient, Mr. Manager?
Probably not.
We're gonna recess for five minutes, it's seven forty-three, we'll come, we'll, we'll call it seven forty-five, we'll come back at seven fifty. Forty-six. That's a very brief intermission. For you. Alright, so moving on to our next discussion item, which is on the ambulance, the new not-new ambulance that we purchased.
Um, so Marty, if you can hear us.
Yes, sir, I can.
Yeah, I, I can just barely, barely hear you, I don't know if we need to up um the volume or what we need to do.
There you go.
Well, I don't know if that helped, I got my.
You pulled up was really low.
Yeah, Marty, hold on a second.
Yeah. Yeah. There you go.
Alright, Marty, try again.
Um, I've been having trouble hearing the council too.
Yeah, okay, we can hear you now, though.
Can you hear us?
Yes. Um. We, with permission and lots of work with the city staff and Mr. Romack, we were uh successful with it on this piece of equipment. Our plans are to go down tomorrow to Cannon Township and pick this vehicle up. Um, that means we're gonna have another couple of weeks for it's placed in service. Uh, we have to uh set up and change uh the serial number, VIN numbers, and stuff with the county fire commission. Um, we have to get insurance on it with Ms. Johnson, and I do have a title, uh, I believe, and I will bring it back.
I believe.
Um, I was told there is a title for it, and I'm not where the council uh understands the excessive amount of time that Ms. Johnson and I spent trying to get titles for two other vehicles that were never registered.
Goodness.
Um, that's another story for another time, but we were successful, and we plan on taking possession tomorrow.
So just to clarify, our two other vehicles were not like hot or stolen.
No.
Marty was a good enough driver that he never got pulled over while driving a fire truck.
You know, that would be problematic if we stole a fire truck from someone, so.
No.
We, we are clear that we do in fact own them.
Yes, we do, we do have titles for them, and uh eventually, I would like to get rid of both pieces of equipment.
Now that we're sure we own them.
Yes, um, at auction, um, there was uh a lot of, a lot of good use out of both pieces of equipment, but like everything else, it gets tired more.
As a person who drives a two thousand four minivan and a nineteen ninety-three GMC truck, I have all the feels.
Hey Marty, how many miles are on this uh, this new ambulance that you just got?
Just under thirty-eight thousand.
Woo.
That's a very low mile.
That is.
And uh, I believe our mechanics looked at it, it does have some minor issues, but otherwise the mechanics are in pretty good shape, right?
Out of the four or five issues our mechanic found, we can probably fix three of my, I know we can fix three of them in-house, just minor little stuff. Um, the other ones are gonna take a certified mechanic because it is fire equipment.
That's okay, I think we pay for mechanical maintenance.
Uh, we also, I don't want to save the numbers, but we did also get this for about uh two to three thousand less than we anticipated, and uh, I think that's eight or nine thousand less than you guys approved.
Excellent. So what you're saying is we have eight thousand dollars for Halloween candy.
That's what I said.
That's what I heard.
No, we can put it in that steam-powered fire truck.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
You know, you joke, it could actually be an issue at some point, so.
Eight thousand dollars worth of candy or steam-powered fire truck?
The fact that we have an antique fire truck that was not being fixed, um, and we might need some funding.
Yeah, I'm more than willing.
I think we should do, yeah, that's, yes, but we'll come back to that in.
Yeah, but that's, we have a responsibility to maintain our heritage for this.
Because mostly we don't have a price.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion on that? Thank you, Marty, and thank you for keeping your eyes out and catching that, and thank you to you and um Ms. Johnson for making sure that we don't get pulled over for not legally owning our fire truck. Is that a thing? Like, does that happen?
I, I would just like to make one more comment, I have a friend that is a sergeant on the Kent County Sheriff's Department that would maybe look the other way.
Oh, dear.
Marty, just for the record, though, I think Jason Kelly's actually a captain now, not a sergeant.
Well, I did not know that.
Very, yeah, that's fine. By the way, if you see Jason Kelly, send him our regards. Okay, any other discussions on the not, definitely not stolen fire trucks or the new ambulance? The new, not entirely new ambulance. Alright, moving on to discussion on downtown development authority strategic planning session on October seventeenth, five P M, which is Monday, um, at the fire station.
Notice that it does not say new fire station.
Correct.
It is only one fire station.
There is only one fire station.
And there is no fire barn. Oh, sorry, somebody on that.
There was. Um. It's really interesting how that space looks.
Small.
Um, so I, I had a good meeting with Sue Spar, uh, new leader of the C B D T.
She's fabulous.
And um, I think we'll be working probably with them to develop that space, and maybe with D D A too, depending on what happens on Monday.
Okay.
But uh, I put it on your agenda to remind everybody, and please, please, please come, uh, it is open to the public. Um, it's a public meeting, uh, but obviously you guys have vested interests, so if you're able to, please do come. Um, I've arranged for some catering. So we'll have a little bit of food there, but, you know, we have a D D A which for ten, twelve years before I got here had no money.
Mm-hmm.
Now have the money.
Thank you, by the way, Mr. Manager.
Obviously Darla had a lot to do with that as well, but.
Thank you, Madam Finance Director.
But, um, you know, they have a good budget, but they're not, you know, they're not budgeted like we are. And so their influence is going to be, uh, I think collaborative with other boards and other groups like the C B D T and like the city, uh, where they can say. uh, where they can say, well, we've got people who can work on this issue. We've got a little bit of money to throw at it, and we'd be happy to, you know, meet you halfway. We'd be happy to apply for grants. Uh, but they're hyper-focused on the downtown district. Um, and as the core of our city, um, and with all the other grants and stuff we're doing on the downtown part of the city, I think we'll have a good opportunity in the next five or ten years to really make downtown a place where people want to be. Um, and this is kind of the kicking off. If you're able to come on Monday, five P M. at the fire station, I would appreciate you.
Any questions on that? Okay. Moving on to discussion item D that we added on a um, discussion about what paper we should publish in as a public notice is being a public entity, we are required to publish our um, meetings in two locations. And generally speaking, you try to use a newspaper. It's not actually a requirement that it be a newspaper, but.
It might actually be.
Chris Burns was quite adamant that it wasn't. Actually, she pulled them from the post because she didn't want to spend the money.
So I think in the near future, the legislature will probably have to address this issue because newspapers, as we know, are going away. But I think, not having read the law, maybe Madam Clark has, I think the newspaper is required.
I, I think it's a good idea.
But, um, to the point, and then I'll let, um, Ms. Johnson take over if she'd like. Uh, we've lost our newspaper, our local newspaper. It's a tragedy. Uh, we obviously didn't want that to happen, but uh, the most logical, uh, next location is the Rockford Squire. A little bit more expensive. It is going to cause some, uh, planning commission issues for us uh, based on how they need to accept things and then when they put their newspaper out. So it's gonna change how I can get special land uses and stuff, you know, in the newspaper, which is required. Uh, but they're the most logical. They're the closest. They're the cheapest. I think Greenville has newspaper, but it's, I think, more expensive.
Greenville Daily News?
Way.
I don't know if they're still daily. Are they still daily? Wow, that's impressive.
Grand Rapids has newspaper, but is significantly more expensive.
I saw you, the prices were listed in the, there was an email. Yeah.
But, uh, Madam Clark was working on this, so if you have additional questions, you might be in that position.
Okay, so I'll just, Ms. Powell.
Well, my hope is if we're going to be using the Rockford paper for our legal notices, that maybe that will bring us together again as a community. And they will maybe shift some of their focus to Cedar Springs, uh, local news. We, um, used to do that with Rockford and Sand Lake, but there was a time when Rockford and Cedar Springs were more like a sister cities. And, um, we even celebrated Red Flannel Day, and we had the train go back and forth to Rockford and back. That was pretty exciting, so. I just hope to see more cooperation between our two communities for activities.
Is that?
It's a shame that we don't, you know, the, the newspaper is gone. Um, it's just things are changing, um, and eventually there's gonna be other ways that we're gonna have to publicize stuff, but it, it would be, I do remember too when we used to, um, have more things in the square that were from Cedar and other areas, so I don't think it necessarily is a bad thing. To, to do it in the square, I think it'll be good, and like she said, maybe we can, we'll get a little bit more stuff in that, in that paper. Miss Nixon?
Um, no, I, I think that is the closest paper to us, so geographically it makes sense. Um, what to do with that post, but here we are.
Um, my one question would be, would you use the Post and the Greenville Daily News for, say, the planning commission pieces that have a timeframe problem?
I think you'd run into a problem with people saying, like, you're shifting back and forth and I don't know which newspaper to look into.
I didn't know if we did planning commission in that one.
Um. It, it's not that significant of a problem. It's a problem insofar as, you know, I bend over backwards to try to get these developers in here. Yeah, you know, every developer ever invented wanted their thing approved of last week.
Right.
So it's just, it is what it is.
And most of those things require public hearings.
Yes.
And they have to have a certain number of days' notice before the public hearing.
So these are just things that are unavoidable. Um, and just gonna extend it out a little bit. You know, uh, we do continue to try to be a very business-friendly community because needed to. But, you know, this is kind of like the sky is blue. It is what it is.
Okay. No, Ms. Johnson, or Ms. Johnson, Sir Clerk, Ms. Hamel. Okay. No, that's fine.
Like the newspaper and stuff, like history that you.
Sure, Ms. Johnson.
The only thing I would mention is that I have reached out to the Rockford Squire to see if they can deliver weekly to us. Um, so that way residents can pick up a copy while they're paying a water bill or a tax bill or visiting City Hall. Um, I have been informed that they will be dropping off those newspapers, um, weekly to us.
Okay, I saw that email chain.
Meyer as well. Um, I was working on it early in the week, and I just got confirmation that they will be delivering, um, weekly. And they do offer subscription services for residents, so if residents would like to have a copy delivered to their home, it's eighty dollars a year, and they do have an online publication.
They drop it at Redbird, Redbird too. I don't know about the brewery, but Redbird for sure.
Any other conversation? I was hoping that maybe the community building development team could, um, I don't know how short the Post was.
I talked with Ms. Reed about it. Um, you know, I think by the time that the word got out that they're closing down, they were past the point of no return.
I see.
Um, I didn't hear anything from them, which is a little unfortunate, because of course I could have maybe used my connections to help them out, but uh, by the time I talked with her about it after the announcement came out, I just, I think they were done.
Because it's really, um, the government teacher would say the pre-press is absolutely the fourth branch of government. And, you know, there have been plenty of times that we have.
I've loved and hated the Post. Absolutely, but it's important.
It's critical, absolutely critical, and.
Part of the conversation that I had with Ms. Reed, similar to what you're saying, um, is, you know, we're not always gonna have a forthright, transparent government like I try to run. There are some governments, there's some city councils, um, who try to hide things and try to, you know, put spins on things. Um, and the free press, as you're indicating, uh, shines light on stuff like that. Uh, we've seen that in nearby communities, uh, where, you know, things are not going like they should be. And you read about the news and it brings kind of the ire of the public down on you.
You've seen it in this community.
I'm sad to see them go, but I agree with Ms. Powell. I'm hopeful that the Rockford Squire will start picking up some more of our Cedar local news. Um, and hopefully they'll paint me, you know, positive light. But, you know, we're, we're doing good things in this community, and, uh, I think it should be a newspaper.
Okay, any other conversation? Moving on to communications, community event calendar?
We've had a number of community events come in just in the last week or so, um, which I don't know if they need it here. Um, some of the stuff is kind of older stuff too. Um, we have a pumpkin giveaway that the, uh, Chamber of Commerce forgot to get approval for. Uh, that was dropped off at my office yesterday. Uh, it's been held in the past without issues, so I don't see it as a problem, but we do still have to coordinate, you know.
Yeah.
In the fire.
We're gonna do it at the heart?
We're gonna do it at Morley Park.
Oh, okay.
Um, I originally thought when they said Morley Park, they meant Skinner Field, because they have done that with their Easter event, but apparently they actually need Morley Park, so. Um, yeah, I'm just trying to get some of these through the process, and you guys will probably see those after the event occurs. Um, but I will email you any approvals that come out.
All good.
Uh, and then I, I did add a couple of, um, ordinance amendment drafts that are coming so that you can familiarize, familiarize yourselves with them. They, they may change from this, but you guys will see a recommended ordinance at some point in the next.
Anything else? Community events, community event calendar? Uh, the twenty-twenty-two calendar?
Um, I don't know where you're looking, but something I would point out is at some point very near now, we'll start working on the twenty-twenty-three calendar.
Oh, yeah. It says twenty-twenty-two, but it would be the twenty-twenty-three.
I think that's.
The clerk does add your twenty-twenty-two calendar to every agenda. That's have a reference point.
Yeah.
Get that question.
Yeah, that's nice.
But I'm saying, from a action perspective, um, you might wanna start looking at your second Thursdays throughout next year. Um, see where there might be a holiday, see where you may have a conflict. So we can start choosing, you know.
And we do meet on the second Thursday of November, correct? Okay, because of where the, sometimes it's because of the election.
I've also already asked for, I can't remember if it was this meeting or the planning commission meeting, but I have a conflict with one of the meetings. So we'll bring that to the respective board and get their input. I just won't be able to make it, so I'll be at a conference. But, yeah, please look at your calendar.
Sure. And then North Kent Community Enrichment, the Audit and Expense Report. Any questions on that?
Could we ask Darla how she's feeling about that, their stability at this point in time? The, the audit looked pretty good to me, but I'm not always the best at reading financial.
Well, before she jumps in, if she's going to.
Okay.
It's a bit of an unfair question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because there's, I think, a difference between, uh, the kind of answer you get from a finance director.
Yeah.
Whether they have money or not. Versus the political answer, which you would get more from the discussion between myself and you guys. Because you can have an organization that has some money, but that's because they're running one program. And, you know, that's, I don't think what we want to see, and I'm not saying that's what they're doing. I'm saying there's a difference between the actual how much money they have versus politics of whether we want to continue with an organization or not. But that being said, NKCE has been doing a good job, as far as I can tell.
Me too. I just, uh, wanted the opinion of the expert.
The, the pieces of like the groups that were gonna pull out that didn't pull out, has that pretty much resolved itself?
Uh, again, it's a, it's an ongoing issue. One of the things I was trying to resolve today, um, so I don't know what the future will hold. But one thing I have been working with NKCE on is bringing some additional programming into town. We talked about astronomy, and we also talked about archery classes.
Yep, you and I talked about those.
So, um, I think it's a valuable thing. I think it's doing a good job. Ms. Falcon, if you're there, can you speak to the, I guess, the finances of the, of the board?
Sure, um, so like you said, Rose, the, the audit is there. Um, financially, they do look, uh, very healthy. The NKCE, um, as a whole is very healthy. Um, we have almost fifty thousand in the bank. Um, but that is due to, you know, a couple of years, all the entities contributed their portion, and not many programs were held, so that allowed us to accumulate some extra funds in the bank. But as far as this year goes, uh, we did our normal summer programming. Uh, participation is continuing to increase. Um, when you have a whole year of no activities, um, sometimes it takes a little bit to build your participation back. Um, just spreading the word of the programs and that kind of thing. We just, however, um, came across the first time where, uh, traditionally NKCE has, um, organized some basketball camps, both boys and girls. And the school has told us that they will be holding, will be organizing all of that themselves. So we'll, we, we haven't even started, so we don't really know how that's gonna impact us. But, um, we're not gonna let that slow us down or stop us. We're gonna keep on going with uh, programs we've had in the past and, and come, try to come up with new ones like, um, Mr. Romack has recommended. We do have, um, the Chicago bus trip coming up. We get registered, people registered for that every day. And then, uh, the next big event is the daddy-daughter dance. Tickets are already available online for that, and people are buying them every day as well, so time will tell.
February?
Yes, February fourth.
It's a wildly popular event.
I understand. I'm just, I, it's October. That's a whole winter. Like, right, right? There's, there's a huge number of holidays in between. I've got like Halloween and Thanksgiving.
Think about Tuesday, right?
Where you will see Facebook posts of people who are desperate for tickets and they're willing to sell their screen for them.
I, it's fabulous. I, I got you. It's wonderful. Okay. Um, anything else on that?
Thank you, Darla.
Yeah.
And moving on then to the vacancy on the local officers' compensation committee due to the passing of our TTOF. I need to find a person.
Yeah, so, um.
I have several spots I gotta find people for.
So the clerk and I recently sent the board a list of, I think it's four or five different vacancies. Um, obviously, it's small community, sometimes it's hard to recruit for those positions. But, uh, you know, traditionally what happens is the person will fill out, you know, the application for appointment, kind of telling us who they are. Then either myself or the mayor will reach out to them and speak with them, kind of get a feeling for who they are, and then make a recommendation. I believe technically, uh, the mayor, uh, asks you to appoint and then asks for consent to appoint. Or some, something.
Then we put it on, we put it on the agenda. Um, so if you know people who, because we all, I'm sure, just knew lots and lots of people that are down to sign up to volunteer.
Well, on that board, they don't meet very often.
I know.
Right?
They do not.
Tell, tell them how often they meet, then people online might.
Well, it's a, it's a.
Officers' Compensation Committee meets once every two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, they make a recommendation to the city council of what the city council's salary should be.
Ooh, I wanna be on it.
And for.
Saying I volunteer.
And for multiple, and multiple years, we did not listen to them.
Yeah. They would say.
Twenty-fourteen all the way until twenty-twenty-one, said, yeah, we're good.
We're good. They kept saying you should get paid more, and we said, mm, we're good.
Yeah, I feel like I should just jump in for half a second, because this one bugs me. By, and I'm not saying you guys are doing anything wrong, but by turning down pay raises. You're making it difficult for people who require the money to serve.
Mayor Emeritus had this conversation with us, which is why the last time.
We said okay.
We said okay.
I just, I don't want to be a, well, they're, you know, it's, it's a volunteer service. No, you guys spend your time and your money doing this, and you should be compensated fairly forward.
You think, uh, because you're saying like we buy candy? Is that what you're?
Buy candy, print things off your printers, use your gasoline, you know, all the many, 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 many things. I personally think you guys should, you know, approve those more regularly.
We'll always go, yes. Okay. Um, anything else on that? Moving on to, but if you know somebody.
There's also a library board, a ZBA.
Yeah, I have to talk to Kami. She may have someone.
I'll, I'll speak with her tomorrow.
Um, and then so then moving on to Cedar Springs, the CBDT Community Cleanup and Celebration Community Event this Saturday. Um, Brewing Company already had that.
Yeah.
And then the Cedar Springs Brewing Company Festival Celebration Community Event. That was I'm confused.
This is just.
It's already, oh, okay. I was gonna say, this happened already. Um, Open Mic Night is coming up in November. The Act Fifty-One Report, Planning Commission Industrial Facade Ordinance Amendment Draft, Proposed Mingle With. Proposed Mingle with Kris Kringle Community Event will be December third and fourth.
Still working on the parade route, but otherwise it's been held in pass without.
Okay. And there was, there was some question, is the carriage rides still gonna be part of that? And there was some lighting. It was a concern.
Um, yeah, I don't think I've approved of this event yet because of the parade route.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, I also don't remember.
Okay. Cause that was, I, I remember that being, people being concerned.
Yep. Um, we, we discussed the issue of the carriages not being lit up well enough.
Right.
But I don't remember if the carriages are part of this event.
Okay. Okay.
And, uh, Marty Frasier, Chief Fraser has to approve the lighting on those carriages, is what I understood.
Well, every single one of these community events goes to fire, police, and DPW for all their, um, input.
Yes.
So I, I guess I traditionally in the past haven't asked for Chief Fraser to approve of it.
Yes.
But, you know, either Chief Fraser or Sergeant Probst, I think, are probably both capable of doing that.
Yes.
Part of the issue is that these carriages show up on the day of the event. Uh, they don't show up ahead of time for us to see these things. Um, so if they show up and they're not well enough lit, you want me to be the bad guy and say, sorry, not happening this year?
Well, Mr. Fraser was the one that complained about them not being well lit last year. So I think we should take some positive steps to make sure that they are well lit.
Well, and I don't know that I felt like Chief Fraser complained. I had quite a few citizens who told me that they were concerned. Like, they kind of popped out of nowhere and they were worried they were gonna.
I think it was more likely that people had complained to Chief Fraser.
Right. That was more my understanding.
But yes, I will make sure that the carriages are better lit this year and safer.
I wonder if it may be a possibility to buy some LED-lit triangles, the slow-moving vehicle triangles. And if they wanted to operate on city streets, they could reimburse whatever entity for that triangle at cost. But that's a whole lot of.
Yeah, or we could just simply keep them on hand and.
Oh, that's not a bad idea.
True. I mean, I, I feel like we could use them for other things. I think they can get used lots of places.
Mr. Fraser, you have your hand up. Do you have some input?
Yes, the concern about the.
Chief Fraser.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yes. Um, my concern with the carriage rides, uh, they weren't very visible. That was my concern. Plus, I was passing on some concerns, um, like the council said, from some citizens too. Um, I, I just, I really, really, really don't want to go out there on a vehicle horse accident and, no. So if we can take steps as a group, i.e. the council, the city manager, and possibly Sergeant Probst and I, um, to ensure the safety of these people, it, uh, it would do my heart good.
So when it comes to us, we'll make sure that's one of those things that we, uh, stress.
Sounds wonderful. Anybody else have any input on that? Thoughts? All right. Uh, Planning Commission Determination of Required Parking Facilities Ordinance Amendment Draft.
I put that together. Um, basically, uh, the planning commission has, uh, taken it on their own authority, um, that they can allow less than the minimum required under the ordinances. Um, I agree with them. That's probably a very smart course of action. That's pretty much what's being addressed in this ordinance. Um, but it would require them to elucidate on the record why they are departing from the minimum. I think anybody who's been through a Meyer or a mall in the last five years realizes there's way too much parking requirement. So if the developer can produce evidence to show that they don't necessarily need all the parking that's otherwise required, we'll give the planning commission the ability to approve of that.
And just to clarify, the planner also supports this position, correct?
I think he's not opposed to it.
Okay. It, they're not doing it like, they didn't go rogue and decide they were.
No, I, I definitely.
I just wanted to be clear. This is my understanding.
There were a couple that I was on the planning commission for that they wanted like, you needed like a hundred or something, and it was like, you were never gonna need anywhere close to that.
Only the chairperson of the planning commission has gone rogue. Everybody else, totally normal.
Be sure it's everybody else, because I know there's really questionable.
There is.
And it's not me.
Oh, but I, I think it's a very smart course of action moving forward.
I would not disagree. All right, department reports. Mr. Manager.
Um, October is very busy for me because, uh, my wife and I have our anniversary and both our birthdays. Um, so I do have a short vacation coming up. So you guys will not see me.
Get to take vacation.
Thank you. Um, however, for the last six years, I've made sure that my vacations, for the most, for the most part, um, don't keep me away from planning commission or city council meetings.
You, you get to take a vacation.
So, um, other than that, uh, you know, things are going good. Uh, this, this year's been extremely busy. You know, the finance director, the clerk, the DPW director, all have been very busy. But we've also accomplished a lot. Main Street Bridge, and all the grant applications, the West Street Project, uh, broadband cable that's being installed. Um, and staff has done an excellent job. Uh, one thing I'm looking forward to though is this EDA's planning session.
Do we have a date on the bridge?
Uh, not yet. I was originally told the eighteenth.
Right.
Has not been confirmed.
That's like, whose day?
Yes. Um, as soon as I know, you guys will know. And I would like to do a ribbon cutting or some kind of short ceremony.
Okay.
Um, and I've already spoken to the fire department and the library on that, and might even be able to get some Rice Krispie Kreme made for that event. Um, but yeah, successful year. I'm looking forward to, uh, continuing to, I guess, fulfill the vision of the city council in the future.
Fabulous. Department of Public Works, Mr. LaRose, do you have anything for us? Oh, I thought I saw him on there.
He was leaving for vacation.
Good.
Ms. Johnson, you know if he left for vacation?
He did.
Hooray!
Oh, I sat by and saw, um, Mr. Osborne today at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, everything was going fine there, and then he sent me a picture, um, of some.
I just love how happy our wastewater treatment plant people are.
Really is.
Really are.
He, he then sent me this, uh, grotesque picture of soup that he had to, uh, take out of one of our, our pools. So I, I'll show it to you if you'd like to.
No, thanks. There was a questionable manhole.
Oh, yes, the hairy manhole.
Yes, I was going to leave out the rest of that.
Oh, yes.
But, uh, you know, other than that, the Department of Public Works is in good hands with our, um, with Tanya. And, uh, we're happy that Bill gets to get away.
Yes. Uh, Police Department, Sergeant Probst.
Yes, uh, things have been going really well. Things have been pretty quiet in the city here. Red Flannel, I think, went pretty well, all things considering. Some of the big problems with the road closure made for some, quite a few headaches for everybody in town. But for the most part, I did not hear any complaining about it, other than the, kind of, nobody was really upset about it, knowing that the road closures are there, and the city was kind of shut down for that two-hour parade period, so. We did not have any major incidents or really hardly any minor incidents with the beer tent or with it, all the people that we had in town, everything went pretty smooth.
And there was big turnout. The weather was spectacular, and there was a lot of people, people here.
We're gonna continue to work on the parade route, hoping that someday we'll get it perfect. Be great if we could start at the school and end somewhere else and not have to backtrack. So it's a difficult backtrack, because the parade is very long, so it hits itself on its way back to the school. So we're still working on that, and hopefully someday we'll have it perfect, but.
I'm here like ninety.
It's not far away.
I know. Eighty-three years we've been trying to get it.
Just to add on, I think what he's implying is that there is a very large parking lot kind of near to the end.
Yes.
Parade route. And a lot of these people who are in the parade could, um, I guess muster out at these parking lots and just rejoin the crowd. Um, and that would solve a lot of issues. So I think we're gonna, we have, um, several yearly meetings with the Red Flannel Festival. And so I anticipate that'll be a, a topic of discussion probably in March or April.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else on that? Thank you for all of the service that you provide all the time, but especially at Red Flannel, when we throw a giant party for underwear and fifty thousand of the friends show up. So that was spectacular. Moving on to the fire department. Marty, you got anything for us besides our wonderful new equipment?
Well, I'm trying, still trying to figure this computer thingy out. I might have to get, get my grandson up here to help me. I don't know, but, um, I don't have anything other than what we've already discussed. Uh, everything, our numbers are continually going up. Um, I had a brief, uh, discussion with the city manager and staff on Monday. Maybe this full-time person is gonna be sooner than later, but that's, that's food for thought and discussion for later. Other than that, uh, I would like again to thank the council and the city manager, uh, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Felton, and pardon me for that, um, for their help in the purchase of this vehicle. Uh, I just continually brag about the people that I work for and help make my job a lot easier. I, I got a great group of guys and, uh, city staff is always there, willing to help, and I appreciate that.
And I would just like to give an extra thank you to our fire department staff who had a lot of medical calls on Red Flannel and handled it just spectacularly smoothly while simultaneously running a vaccine clinic to get our community free vaccines for flu and COVID boosters. And that was phenomenal. I really appreciate how you take public safety and public health as all part of that piece while you were also trying to deal with heart attacks and other things that were happening that day. And you made it look easy.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Conley, for that, and I will pass it on to the members. Uh, we had ten calls, eleven calls that day, so.
Yeah.
Not, not one bee sting, which surprised me.
I, I got, I got pockets full of nothing. So thank you for that. Moving on to the city clerk.
It's been a very, very busy time for us. We are prepping for November eighth, so please do come out and vote. Our new deputy is working out very well. She's been catching on to things very quickly, so we used to say that she, um, is a great addition to the team. Other than that, we're just working on keep our head above water.
And can people still get an absentee ballot if they want one?
Absolutely.
Okay, so they should come in and request it, and they can get an absentee ballot, or you can come in and vote on November eighth. And please come and vote. So, says the government teacher. Moving on to the finance director and treasurer. Any questions, comments, Darla?
I have nothing further to report unless there's a question or something.
Anybody got anything? As always, you make things that could be very complicated, very readable and understandable, and thank you for that. Code enforcement. And building inspections that don't happen. They happen.
So if they do happen, we don't provide you the records.
We just have no information on them, so. And then, uh, boarding commissions minutes, the bridge progress, which we're hoping Tuesday, maybe?
As soon as I know, we'll let you know.
Okay. But it's still a possibility, the Tuesday could be, next week, maybe?
You know, I, I'd be surprised only because I haven't heard anything. Um, I'm anticipating at the earliest late next week.
Okay.
Probably the week after.
Okay. I have some conflicts on Wednesday, so that's my.
But in my forty years, I was wrong once before, so it's possible I could be wrong a second time.
Okay, good to know. Should we, should we ask your wife?
That's a low blow. That's so funny, though.
I'm just saying.
Which, by the way, we celebrated our twentieth anniversary this.
Congratulations. Congratulations. So, and I hear that you had a lovely dinner.
Yes, she, she cooked. Um, but I'm taking her out for.
Oh, this is not the one that I.
Birthday dinners.
Okay. Uh, then council comments. Well, this, uh, before we do this, um, we were discussing whether or not we want to move into closed session. Do you, to do the city manager's review. He said he is okay with us tabling it. Um, lots of people are tired, lots of people are not feeling well, we're missing two people. Um, what is your thoughts on that?
I make a motion that we table it.
There's a second?
Second.
Supported. Okay, all in favor? I?
I.
Will bring it back up at the next meeting for November. Are you, you're?
I mean, we could set a special meeting if you guys wanted to, but otherwise.
Do you need it to be?
No.
Okay. Cause it was kind of August.
Yeah, no.
This is sort of October.
Wouldn't be the first time we've done that either.
I understand.
There was another November.
I think there was. I think they may have all been in November at this point in the game.
My contract just says that you guys have to do it once a year.
So if it's always late, then actually we're right on time.
Sure, yeah.
Good, we're consistent. Yeah, we don't want to do it early. Those are people off.
So we've got it. Everybody's got your forms and feels good about, because it's a new, it is a new, um, structure, and I think it's better.
It's, I, I love.
Yeah, yeah.
This is so much more useful.
It is so much better. And I feel like we can say, like, here's the wonderful things, and here's some very specific things. We, I mean, I think it's just, it's part of you actually ask for direction, not even just necessarily critique, but like, what do you want me to do next year?
So kind of to meld a few things, I'm, I don't want to labor the point, but part of what is reason is I gave this, this plot analysis from your strategic planning session was, you know, as part of my review, we'll probably be talking a little bit about what you guys want me working on for the next twelve months.
Right.
So.
I think that's fabulous. I greatly appreciate it. So much, much more beneficial, and I appreciate you, us saying to you, we don't think your evaluation form is very good. Could you go find another one that's better? And you come and say, here. So I think that's really fabulous.
I didn't find that one. I created that one.
Okay. You created another one when we said we didn't like the previous one. So that's, I'm just trying to say, I appreciate that. So. And then moving on to, then we'll, we'll pop back up to our, since we're not going into closed session, council comments. And you want me to do it down the order, because one time I did it not in the right order, and it was problematic.
We don't care.
Okay, Ms. Atkinson.
Once again, it said, it's, um, a great honor to serve on this board and, um, to have the staff that we have to work with. I, um, am thankful that, uh, I respect everybody on this board and that we can come to an agreement really easy on a lot of things and be able to tell our point of view without getting yelled at for it, which is good. That's it.
Uh, Ms. Hamon?
Um, I guess the most important thing is to make sure that everybody votes. That's super, super, super crazy important.
In November?
Yeah. I mean.
Critical.
Thousand percent.
I completely agree. Ms. Powell?
I'm so proud of the Red Flannel Festival this year for many reasons, but especially for the board. And they are just a great group of people that are professional, hardworking, and dedicated. And sometimes you wonder, why are they so dedicated? But then, um, it's just the way it is, and, uh, I love that about them. And, um, a couple of months, we'll start stirring up the eighty-fourth, so looking forward to that.
I hope they all get a nice, good nap. Put in a lot of work. Ms. Nixon?
I'm happy to take that nap on their behalf. No, but I had a wonderful time, Red Flannel Day, and it is astonishing to me that volunteers continue to show up to put on a party about underwear that has over a million-dollar impact on the city that brings thirty to forty-five thousand people into this town in one day. It is amazing, astonishing. It's our culture, and I'm proud to be part of it. And so a huge thank you to the board. And then to echo my counterparts, you know, you have to show up to vote. If, if you don't vote, that means somebody else's voice gets heard over yours and you know, it's, it's wisdom of crowds is that we, if we average everyone, we tend to at least go in a same direction instead of a few making decisions for all of us. So November eighth, please show up and vote.
And I would reiterate the pieces about Red Flannel. I was able to pop into the sponsor breakfast very briefly and say thank you. But I would also like to give a public thank you to the folks that make that happen. And it is, it is quite the juggernaut. I mean, it's just astounding. I have people from outside of the community who come who are just amazed at what it is. And it was a glorious day. The weather was spectacular. The people were spectacular. The floats were wonderful. It was just, the pancakes were delicious. Mr. Andrew, you missed out on the.
How about those witches?
Those witches were amazing.
Yes.
The witches of Cedar Springs. It was really, so big thanks to the folks at Red Flannel. I would really like them to know that we appreciate and have a really understanding of just how much work they put in. And yes, we absolutely have to show up and vote. And you need to show up and tell the folks at our library how much you appreciate them. I've had a lot of shouty people who really would like to burn books in my life in the last month. And we've had a little bit of blowback on it. I have a list, actually, of books that my kid would like to donate to the library that have been challenged, books that have characters in them that have disabilities. That's one of the primary targets that these people who want to ban books want to ban. They want to ban characters and stories of people who are disabled. They want to ban characters and stories of people who are LGBTQ, of people who are black and brown. And our public libraries are standing in the gap in here. And so make sure you say things. They're not telling us necessarily, but I know because I'm getting it from the school piece. And it's, it's an interesting time. So. Um. And with that, we're adjourned.